Go ahead, Mr. Presley.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats. Some quick announcements from me, and then I'll also walk through board member comments. First, I want to make sure all the board members are here. I was told Mrs. Stevenson joined. I did see her picture. Ms. Rajat, I see her name. I see Mr. Gilbert. Mrs. Hoffman, are you on?
I think she had problems with the link. Not sure if I heard.
Mr. Delalo, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And Mrs. Miller, are you on?
I'm right here, yep.
Okay, so Mrs. Hoffman, I think she'll come back up, but let's proceed if that's okay. I just want to make sure we all understand through language what this meeting involves. We've been progressing through doing online meetings. We got a, I thought, fairly successful one two weeks ago. This is our first one where we have a public comment portion because this is a public session meeting. Unfortunately, we won't have people in the room, but people can bring forward questions because this is live streamed. This is pursuant with Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law and some changes that the government made with a recent executive order. So I think we're making good progress in getting these meetings to be online and to have the appropriate amount of public participation, and look forward to seeing us expand on that. So at this point, I'll turn it over to board members if they want to make any comments. Also, is Grace on as our student representative? If not, let's go to Mrs. Miller. Anything for you?
Yep, thanks, Bob. I just wanted to take a minute just to, first, I hope everybody's well, I hope everybody's family's well. And I really just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge Dr. Robinson, Dr. Wood, all the administrators and teachers alike. Just want to say thank you for all the hard work and effort. We, as we all know, we have a giant district, and we haven't skipped a beat. Education is happening. Our kids are learning, even in this crazy time, and it's a tremendous experience that this is even happening. So thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done and all the things that you're doing.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Mrs. Hoffman.
Yes, hi. Thank you. I apologize. I went to the livestream first and realized that was the wrong link. So what I'd like to share is, first, I want to give a quick update to say that I'm really impressed with how quickly people have adjusted. We're moving committee meetings to either rescheduling them, like with IPAC, it was pushed out to next week to give people time to work on presentations. And for like, for example, the Policy Committee, we're still moving forward. Policy is shared out, and people have an opportunity to review and comment. I also really think it's important to recognize and thank our administration and teachers because though our buildings are closed, business of education is alive and well here at SHEN. Our teachers continue to educate through distant learning. Food Services continues to prepare meals for students. Transportation has been transporting those meals. Our counselors are working on schedules. IT is making this learning possible, and also continue to keep systems up and same with facilities and maintenance. Just to name a few, but I think it's really important to recognize that even though the kids aren't in the buildings, we're still doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that is making education first. We are at a time dealing with a crisis that has long-reaching impacts. There are many unknowns, and we will continue to work through that together, and it's important, the "together" piece. I appreciate the leadership of Dr. Robinson. I appreciate the tweets that go out, the messages that go out to educate, and the admin team for doing, for satisfying changes that are coming out from the state, it feels like daily at times. But also, like for tonight, continue to plan ahead for things like to ensure that we have a budget that preserves and staffing levels for the betterment of all of our students, and I just, I feel that really needed to be said. Thank you for that. Thank you to all.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Rajat, any comments from you?
Yes, I really can't say it any more beautifully than what Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Hoffman have said. They basically covered a lot of the comments I would have made, so I reiterate everything that they said in recognizing our district. It certainly makes one proud to be a part of such a great community as the larger SHEN community. Just one note, I have the pleasure of serving on the High School Partnership Team, and although I was unable to make the web meeting yesterday due to a conflict with a work web meeting, I was happy to see the follow-up that they are looking at doing another podcast, but this time asking for partnership team members and other folks just to share what they're doing for their mental health and how they're dealing with social distancing and what they can do and what they've been doing. So sharing out some ideas on how to entertain yourselves as well as to take care of yourself during this time. So trying to be creative. So they're looking at some input from all of us to send video that they can include in the podcast possibly next week. So it's great to see again the creativity behind everything. Business does continue, but also doing it in a different way to be of service to our students and staff, again, by sharing out some ideas. So it's just, again, to be a pleasure of such a great team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rajat. I would also like to point out that one thing I missed and skipped over was adopting the agenda. So if people indulge me, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Bob, it's Christine. I motion.
Motion for Rajat. Can I get a second?
This is Naomi. I second it.
Second, Mrs. Hoffman. Any comments? Probably not. All in favor? Any nays? Okay, motion passes. So let's jump back to Mr. Gilbert's public comments.
I will obviously reiterating the thanks and the kudos to the entire SHEN staff for the awesome job. The other thing is, obviously, this is a tough time for everybody, but one thing that I think we should not lose track of is the fact that ourselves, our teachers, our students are all going to have to learn in different ways throughout their life. And while this is a little bit different, or a lot different, if you will, I think that is an excellent opportunity for everybody to say, hey, look, I have the ability to learn in a different way. I don't need to have the teachers going right from my side. I have my students there to teach. So this isn't something that's going to last forever, but I think it's a great experience, and I think that we're going to learn a lot about the way we learn best, the way we teach best. And as everybody has said, we are making the best of this difficult situation. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Let's turn it over to Mr. Delalo.
Thank you. I'd like to take a little time to review some of the steps that we've already gone through relative to something we're going to spend a good deal of time on this evening, which is our budget process. I think we all know that under normal circumstances, we start the process with the governor's executive budget, using that as almost like a worst-case scenario, and knowing that the legislature will add on. This year, we had to do that also, but we also knew there was a $6 billion deficit, and that that was probably going to have a negative implication on what happened to the budget. In the interim, of course, there was COVID-19, and that just threw the whole process topsy-turvy. We know from the governor's estimates that the state is going to lose something like $5 to $15 billion, and perhaps south of that as a consequence of essentially the collapse of the state and federal economy. So a lot of the figures that we've worked with already, and even perhaps the one that we're going to be working with today, may have relatively little to do with reality. It's almost a fanciful exercise. It's nothing we can control. We have to deal with what we have to deal with, and we have to follow the process as it is outlined. I know that there's a three, four periods of reassessment and so forth incorporated into the governor's budget for the state, and that at the end of each of these periods, he will, or his Director of Budget will assess what the state's position is and then make adjustments accordingly. I don't believe we have any, we are able to respond ahead of adoption of the budget to any more than the first one. The second one ends at the end of June, and I think we're going to have to adopt the budget or have the budget voted on prior to that. So all I would urge us to do is to delay the final budget as long as possible so that it'll be as real as we possibly can, at the same time incorporating as much flexibility in the budget to deal with those things that might come down that will adversely affect our ability to support our programs and so forth. I'd say that when it's all said and done, there's approximately three things that we do. We work with what we have. We plan for the worst. We hope for the best. And we will all fight for the welfare, the district, its employees, its students and residents. That's about all I have for tonight.
Oh, excuse me. I was mute. Thank you, Mr. Delalo. Turning over to Mrs. Stevenson.
Bob, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Great. Okay, just a couple of things quickly. You know, it's always amazing, even when we were before this public health crisis, I thought when I reached out to Dr. Wood or Dr. Robinson, you know, you hate to, you know they're so busy, and sometimes you want to kind of vet what you send because you know they're busy. And nobody skips a beat. I could reach out and ask Cecilia's question, and Dr. Robinson and Dr. Wood are right on it. And I know if I reached out to Kelly and Becky at any point at this time, they're willing to help. And on top of everything else, that is amazing, and I just want to say thank you for that because, and you know, sometimes even as leaders in the community, I'm sure I can speak for my other board members too. You're feeling, there are days that you're just feeling you're lost out there. So I just want to say thank you for that. And the fact that after this, for everything we're going through, I talk to people, I've never seen so many people walk in my life. This is amazing. I think there are some positives that are coming out of it. And to know, it's kind of surreal that before 3-1, it's like B-C-3-1, right? It'll never look the same. I mean, we will never, healthcare will never look the same. Our economy won't look the same. Our school district and other school districts, New York and nationwide, will not look the same. So this will be very interesting, and I look at it, I'm starting to look at it as a real opportunity and not a barrier. I think this is a real opportunity for us going forward. So SHEN all the way, SHEN strong. So thanks, everybody, very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevenson. Some quick comments from me. Two months ago, we were very much focused on a status quo, which was all about annual standards, doing things in an annual way, whether it be budgeting, graduate, moving kids up on an annual basis through the schools and graduating them every year, and that's all broken. All these norms that we've had have been completely wiped out. And I think what we have is an environment where there's an entirely new set of norms, and it's really adapt and go as you learn more. And I think we're doing a very good job of normalizing our actions, behaviors, and decision-making around these new ways. And if there's one thing I think that I've been able to say to folks is it's really an environment, you have to normalize your own behavior around such norms. And it doesn't happen right away. You find that it changes over time, but I think we're getting better, much better than we were three or four weeks ago. So thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for all your help, all the leadership, all the followership, all just doing it right. And I'll finish up on that. At this point, we'd like to turn it over to public comments. Is there anybody out there, any students that would like to, are students that typically come here that would like to make public comments? Rather than that, we're going to turn to the BOE email that's mentioned. So if you have comments, please bring those over to the board as you see in the write-up in the agenda. The board will, we will take public comments coming in at boe@shenschools.org. All questions come into the Office of Public Information Officer and are shared by the board and our superintendent as appropriate, please. Policy questions really go to the board president. Operational questions, concerns go to the superintendent and our desk committee. So at that point, we've gone through public comments and per the agenda. Let's move over to the next item, which is tenure recommendations, and Mrs. Bush.
Thank you. We have 29 of our teachers who have worked on tenure, either three-year or four-year probationary appointment, and at some point, we will ask to recognize them in person. But as we do this remotely, we have pictures of each of the tenure recommendations, and I'm just going to read the name and the area that they're going to be recommended for tenure in interest of time. Also, in doing this, I'd like to thank the administrators, the teachers, the teacher's family for supporting them through this process, and our Board of Education for reviewing the 29 tenure recommendations as part of the process. So if you are home watching this livestream, make sure that you give yourself a shout-out or a pat on the back or congratulations to your family. So I'm going to start with Caitlin Dollard, and she's being tenured in art. Amanda Forth, elementary. Katherine Grimick, elementary. Tammy Hileiden, elementary. Laura Jakin, elementary. Emily Patterson, elementary. Nicole Sekira, elementary. Jennifer Stevens, elementary. Elizabeth Thielman, elementary. Diane Reineman, elementary. Mackenzie Dillman, technology. Heidi Ackerly, physical education. Ross Halpern, physical education. Nikki Tobano, school counselor. Laura Shagel, school media specialist. Amanda Gwignard, school psychologist. Katie Brower, special education. Casey Schutz, special education. Jessica Sutherland, special education. Jessica Burmeister, secondary English. Christina DiNicolà, secondary English. Devin Egan, secondary English. Dan Anderson, secondary mathematics. Melissa McLaughlin, secondary mathematics. Michaela Vanderzuyden, secondary mathematics. Jordan Danforth, secondary science. Jessica Kennedy, secondary science. Joseph Porto, secondary science. Katherine Helmer, secondary social studies. Those are the tenure recommendations for this evening.
Thank you very much. At this point, can I have a motion to vote on this?
I motion it.
First one was Mr. Delalo. Second was Mrs. Rajat. Any comments or questions from the board? One comment for me is that every year, these are getting better. We're seeing more pictures of folks and just what I think are often much better write-ups that explain what the teacher's doing. And I take a lot of time to look through and see it because I read the write-ups because they have a lot of information about what's going on in the school and how the teachers are impacting student lives. So I really appreciate all the work that the people do in writing these up and the time put in. It makes a positive difference, and to me, it conveys all the things we're doing, both to the breadth and the depth. So thank you very much. Any other comments?
Congratulations to our recipients, our tenure teachers.
Thank you. All in favor? Any nays? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Let's go to information items, recognition of retirees.
Okay, again, we have several instructional staff that will be retiring as of June 30th and non-instructional staff, and I will read the names, the areas, and number of years in the district. We want to congratulate these folks with many years of experience, and we thank them for their work with our students. First one, Joan Abrahamson, special education, 15 years in the district. Heather Baird, music teacher, High School West, 21 years in the district. Linda Brennan Pagano, special education teacher, 13 years in the district. Kelly Crabbe, elementary teacher, 32 years in the district. Mary DeSantis, speech teacher, SCANO, 24 years in the district. Rachel Garrison, art teacher, 19 years in the district. Al Green, art teacher, 31 years in the district. Diane Einan, 20 years, elementary teacher. Victoria Rvicky Jezzalowski, special education teacher, 35 years in the district. Jackie Malek, 34 years as an elementary teacher in the district. James Orton, music teacher, 18 years in the district. Lisa Pierre, elementary teacher, 27 years in the district. Gwen Williams, school psychologist, 25 years in the district. Deb Wisner, school psychologist, 38 years in the district. Jane Zerlow, elementary teacher, 19 years in the district. And Cindy Carey, English teacher, 20 years in the district. We have three folks that you'll see on the screen that have retired already, but within this year. So that's Linda Whalen, art teacher, 23 years in the district. Diane Wheeler, 24 years in the district. And Ginny Fassner, 11 years as a music teacher in the district. Those are the instructional retirees as of June 30th.
So are we separating, or are you going to go right into non-instructional?
We can go right into non-instructional for recognition purposes. Some of these folks had already appeared on a board agenda, so I will go through this. So congratulations to our classified retirees. Diane Bauer, food service, 15 years in the district. Andy Bono, cleaner, 39 years with the district. Norm Bremer, head night cleaner, retired after 11 years in the district. Naomi Brzezinski, cook manager, 25 years in the district. Nancy Brower, typist, 26 years in the district. I'm sorry, I missed Patty Brew. Patty Brew is retiring after seven years. She was a teacher aide. Then we have Naomi Brzezinski, cook manager, 25 years in the district. Sue Butera, typist, 21 years in the district. John Check, cleaner, 21 years in the district. Sue Daltilio, account clerk typist, 27 years in the district. Mike Dougal, building custodian, 27 years in the district. Joe Gattano, cleaner, 33 years in the district. Kathleen Geary, elementary classroom aide, 14 years in the district. Catherine Gervais, teacher aide, 26 years in the district. Nadine Canaly, teacher aide, 21 years in the district. Joseph Mulvaney, 32 years in the district as a cleaner. Robert Martin, 33 years as a head night cleaner. Kathleen Paskey, food service helper, 22 years in the district. Don McBride, building custodian, 10 years in the district. Louie Gina Montesano, retiring after 26 years as a cook in the district. Ken Murray, cleaner, retiring after 35 years. Beth Ross, cook manager, retiring after 26 years in the district. Ed Peabody, school monitor, 15 years with the district. Mary Ann Smith, cafeteria and bus monitor, retiring after 22 years in the district. Beth Philo, cook manager, retiring after 27 years in the district. Jane Klatzke, school bus dispatcher, retiring after 16 years in the district. Rita Scalia, teacher aide, retiring after 10 years with the district. Karen Tremblay, computer lab aide, retired after 20 years in the district. Susan Zalecki, food service helper, retiring after 12 years in the district. I believe that is it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve retirement recommendations?
This is Naomi. I'll place the first motion.
First motion, Mrs. Hoffman. Can I get a second?
It's informational.
Oh, never mind. Okay, thanks for catching that. No voting on that. Let's go back up to, we closed out retirement recognition. Let's go to Safety Award from Utica National, Utica Mutual.
Good evening. This is Becky Carmen, and on the call or at the board meeting also, remotely, we have John Lauffer from Utica National. And John's here tonight to present us with our Excellence Award, the 2020 School Safety Excellence Award in recognition of the school's outstanding efforts to create a safer school environment and as a direct result of the school's diligence and adherence to safety principles prescribed to safety group members. He will be giving us a plaque that was awarded on March 18th, but that was actually canceled. So I'm going to turn it over to John so he can just say a few words. John, you have to undo your mic. All right. I'm not sure. He is on the call. He is there. We were going back and forth, and I see him on the call. So I don't know if he's having technical difficulty, but he was just going to offer a few words about our due diligence in regards to school safety and our safety practices here at SHEN. We have been recipients of this award several years now. He's not muted. He said on his end. He's just not able to speak, he says.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We tried, and in the efforts of continuous improvement, hopefully, we'll circle back on later meetings and be able to do more of this. But go ahead, Mrs. Carmen. I think you've got policy and regulations as well right after this.
Great. So tonight, I'm presenting policies from March's Policy Review Committee meeting for first reading. Most of these policies have to do with instruction, and you'll see there's a few of them. And I'm just, nothing major to note except for animals and pets on school grounds. We did some more cleaning up those policies and the forms to be able to better delineate between a therapy dog versus a service animal versus somebody walking a dog on campus. Are there any questions regarding any of those?
None at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions? And now let's go over to Superintendent's comments. Dr. Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Presley. I'll switch back to the screen in a second. Before going through the presentation, I'm assuming that you can all see me on the screen. I just want to share a couple updates then we go into the budget presentation itself. One, we're all aware that the government...
Yes. All we see is you on the screen. There's no document up.
That's correct. That's correct. I'll change back to the document in a second. Just a couple of updates. As you're aware, the governor issued a new executive order that extends closure of school through April 29th. And so we continue in the suspension of onsite classes and continue with e-learning. And as was mentioned by several board members, kudos to, I would say quite frankly to you, all of our instructional folks, regardless of position, title. There has been a tremendous embrace of e-learning. People doing it for the first time have fully committed to do their very best to try to provide our students with quality experience while they're remotely attending school. Kudos to Dr. Wood and her academic leaders who have been working tirelessly to put plans together from extensive Q and A documents to faculty and staff, to various correspondences, to parents. This has been an ongoing process in continuous development, continuous improvement. And certainly, a lot of lessons have been learned as a result of this. And fundamentally, I think some things will change how we do school beyond this point. Related to that, just yesterday, the Board of Regents made a pretty significant announcement. about the cancellation of Regents exams. And as you know, the Regents exams has been, Regents exams have been the gold standard in education, I would say across the country. New York is one of the few states that have a pretty extensive exit exam process. And so to cancel the Regents exam was a major, major deal. Consequently, today, a series of guidance documents were issued to schools. And we're still now in the process of reviewing those documents to see exactly how they impact our students. And hopefully by the end of the week, we'll be able to issue again some communications to teachers, to administrators, and to parents and students as well in terms of the real implications of the Board of Regents actions pertaining to Regents exams. The one big piece that we're still waiting on, the last executive order prior to Friday was the extension of the budget vote and the election timeline. The governor's executive order was somewhat vague. It just said at least until June 1st, which in many ways creates, keeps us in limbo, if you will, in terms of really trying to have a calendar for the approval of our budgets, which I'll go through in a second. I say we statewide. So that's, that's one date we're all waiting on, I think, in many cases. The governor and others are waiting to see where we go with the suspension of onsite classes. And that may in fact dictate when that final date will be. There are a lot of people now thinking that date might be June 9th, but that's simply speculation. However, we have, myself and Mrs. Chase have been working through a variety of calendar scenarios in case it's June 1st, June 9th, June 16th, to try to have some sense of when we should have information prepared for the board. Related to information for the board, I'm going to shift back to the board agenda. And probably the most significant thing that has transpired in the last week or so since we last met, I'm just waiting for the presentation to come up, was, and I'm assuming, Mr. Pressley, can you still see the screen?
Yes, I can see it. It's loading to get, to fill up the screen. I see a loading signal.
Correct. So. So as I mentioned before, probably the most significant thing came about with the passage of the New York State budget, which we were all waiting on to see what's the direction we should go from a financial perspective. And as you see here, this particular presentation to the board isn't a budget presentation. We're not coming to the board tonight to say this is what we're proposing budget-wise. It's about the strategic steps we're looking to take to be able to be at a point to present to the board a budget proposal or proposed, proposal or proposals, ideally towards the end of April. Two points I want to make here that, that one, this is about being strategic while looking at various contingencies. And to do so, we have a protocol that we often use here as a school district in our decision-making process called a future-present perspective. In other words, we stand out there, out there meaning six months from now, eight months from now, 12 months from now, you pick a timeframe, and look back at today and ask ourselves, what do we want to be? Where do we want to be? And subsequently, what are we doing right now to get to that point? So I share that because that's a mental model that if you don't mind, I'll go through the presentation and entertain questions afterwards that I want you to have as you're listening to the presentation, this future-present perspective. So this is something that, that we always have to come back to, particularly in a time of crisis, is we have to revert back to our why. Why are we in this business? Why are we focused on the things that we're focused on? And certainly the Board of Education knows this is the actualization of the school district mission statement, broken down into some graphical format in very simple terms in terms of why, our why focused on engagement, innovation, cultural competence, global collaboration and collective work and responsibility. So in the midst of all this, we have to, 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 to ground ourselves, if you will, in the why of our work. Another big part of the why specifically related to the budget is the notion of fiscal responsibility, recognizing that we have always been, as a school system, extremely fiscally responsible. When you look at from a per pupil cost, being one of the lowest per pupil costs in the state. When you look at from a perspective of tax levy impact for the last several years, having either reduction or flat tax rate for our two largest communities, the town of Half Moon and the town of Clifton Park. So fiscal responsibility has always been a forte of the school district and we will continue that as we move forward. The second piece related to that then is, as we develop the budget, part of our why is what's the impact we want to have? What's our purpose? And again, going back to these three terms in terms of, of ensuring that our school, our classrooms, our experiences are very inclusive, that we're in fact addressing the needs of all kids. Particularly in a time of crisis, it's not the time for us to start seeing which group, which program turn into acceptable losses. There's no such thing as an acceptable loss when it comes to the education of a child. Related to that is, we also recognize that our students bring a wide variety of experiences to the table and also have a wide variety of needs, subsequently the diverse perspective that we take when we develop the budget. So we have to be reminded of that as a part of our why. And finally, the systematic aspect of it in a sense that, that we need to ensure that this is truly about all students succeeding. So as we go through this process of trying to revise our budget, that's the driving piece. How do we ensure that we're providing the experience so all students can find success? So our why serves as the basis for our budget process. So what then becomes, what do we want to achieve? The first strategic objective is preserving quality programs. And what does that mean? That essentially means minimizing program reductions and, in simple terms, job losses. Oftentimes you hear people say, cut this program, cut that program. And we have to be reminded that programs mean people. We are a human-intensive organization. Although ironically, we have a tremendous reliance on technology right now, we need people in order to provide programs. This aspect of preserving program quality is the notion of service following needs and equating opportunities and outcomes. And so when we say preserving program quality, it's truly being guided by those two conditions. The second piece then, as we look about and try to take a very strategic approach to our fiscal situation, is to avoid debilitating structural deficits. Certainly, we know that the fiscal destiny of New York State is very uncertain right now. And the worst thing we can do is make decision or make, just make a decision that in essence create a structural deficit for the school district. And so we're very mindful about then the decisions that we recommend or will be recommended in terms of avoiding a structured deficit, one that will take years to contend with. A third what, if you will, that we want to see achieved through the budget sequence here is three weeks ago, we started out with a budget that was about 2.69%. And that was a time where, quite frankly with you, we were very comfortable with the budget proposal. And now we're in a situation that we're reevaluating that and now focus on what we're calling a flatline budget. To put things in perspective, the five-year average, if we look at our budget increases over the last five years, it averages to 2.11%. And so when we start thinking about a flatline budget, we anticipate a budget that's probably going to be less than our five-year average. Related to that too, is the reality that because the state of New York made adjustments in the state aid, that also caused adjustment in our tax cap. So as the state aid went down or was reduced, so did our tax cap. So consequently, as we look at our budget increase, we have to be cognizant of also now a lower tax cap than we proposed initially to the board as a part of our budget review process. A fourth component then is, how do we try to have a minimal impact on taxpayers? As a part of our contingency approach, our strategic contingency approach, is to target a tax rate that's roughly 0% or maybe a slight reduction. That's very feasible because for the past two years, if not three years, we've seen, again, for the towns of Half Moon and Clifton Park, tax rate increases that were either at zero or slightly below zero. And so we anticipate again that we will be able to put together a budget that yields a tax rate that probably will be negative or right at zero. We're fortunate that right now, the tax assessed valuation of the school district as a whole, essentially all the properties that that's contained within the SHN district for the six municipalities, the average is roughly above three, above 3%, which is relatively strong when you think about the recent situation of coming off the housing market crash some years ago. So, so we're pretty confident that having a budget that with a tax impact of zero or slightly less is a real feasibility, which is an important piece considering the economic realities of our community and individuals within the community. So how are we hoping to do that? This is where we, the strategic is the long run. The tactical are the things that we are doing right now and will be doing in the next several weeks in order to realize those more strategic objectives. One is, right now, as we're in this suspension of onsite learning state, we are engaged in trying to maximize savings from the current year's budget as much as possible. And the reason why we're doing that is to bolster our fund balance capacity at the end of this budget year. And I will tell you why. That will make sense in a second. To do so, we're in the process now of analyzing everything from vacant positions to try to see if there are positions that we should refill or fill differently or do something otherwise, not only from a cost-saving perspective for this year's budget, but also from the potential of recalibrating our cost footprint for future years. Mrs. Chase recently issued what we call a message of necessity for purchases. In other words, unless there's something that's critical for the next several months, we will essentially have a moratorium on purchasing. We're also then looking at unexpendable allocations. A prime example of this is substitute costs. Being in an online environment, clearly substitute costs are non-existent for this moment. So all those things and many more that's not listed here are ways that we're trying to maximize savings from the current year as a way to bolster fund balance capacity at year-end. That's important because that fund balance capacity or the increased fund balance capacity could potentially allow us to do the second thing, which is utilizing the enhanced fund balance to increase our appropriation for the 2021 budget. Let me just explain terms here. The state of New York allows school districts to carry over a fund balance of 4%. It also allows school districts to establish various reserves. And it also allows school district to reappropriate a certain dollar amount as a part of the revenue stream to what we call level out the tax impact. For Shenandoah for the past 10 years plus, we have reallocated $1.5 million from fund balance into the revenue streams. With an enhanced fund balance capacity, we are looking at a wide variety of scenarios right now in half million dollar increments to say if we reappropriate an additional 500,000, so in other words, then our re-appropriate fund balance goes up to 2 million, what's the impact on the tax levy? If we reappropriate a million dollars additional, so now we go up to 2.5 million dollars of re-appropriate the fund balance, what's the impact on the tax levy? Or if we double that, reappropriate an additional 1.5 million and now at 3 million dollars re-appropriated, what's the impact on the tax levy? So we're running those scenarios right now to try to figure out that with, with some right sizing of the budget, how can we, on the revenue side of the equation, reduce the tax implication, the tax level implication, and subsequently the tax rate in terms of what taxpayers ultimately pay? This is counter or should I say, counteracting the potential loss of state aid, which I will go, it go, go into in a second. A key point here to recognize that the current allowance from the state is 4% fund balance. Until probably about 10 years ago, the allowance was 2%. And so we recognize that we certainly don't want to create a structured deficit. So as we look to re-appropriate fund balance, it's a very tricky proposition because what you do one year, you have to be able and be prepared to do it the next year and potentially next, and potentially next. And so consequently, we have to be very, very careful about what we re-appropriate in any given year because that cycle has to be repeated and/or those funds have to be replaced by funds coming from someplace else. And since the only two other major sources of funds for us is tax levy and/or state aid, we have to be extremely careful about how much fund balance we re-appropriate. So again, I'll pause in a little bit and go through some questions for the board. The third piece that we're looking at, when you think about the budget, there's two sides of the equation, expenditure side and the revenue side. On the expenditure side of the budget, we usually budget roughly about $10 million for the purpose of debt service. And that $10 million is not, isn't actually paid out of the budget. It's transferred into a debt service fund. That's where the actual expenditure is made. And within that debt service fund, we have some reserves now in that debt service fund. And so essentially, part of this looking is to say, instead of budgeting on the expenditure side of the budget, $10 million, could we budget 9.5 and use some of the reserve to offset that $5 million that we're not transferring from the fund, from the, from the budget? Or could we budget only $10 million and use a million dollars in the reserve to offset again that million dollars less that we're not transferring from the budget? And right now, we think we have the capacity to effectively reduce our debt service expenditure allocation by about 1.5 and pay that difference with the balance in that debt service reserve fund. The reason why this is a possibility and a little bit more palatable for us is because our overall debt service is actually reducing year after year. Consequently, in next year's budget, meaning '21, '22, '22, '23, what we would have been budgeting would have been less anyway. So consequently, there's a, 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 a less reliance on having the reserve to offset that difference. So it creates an opportunity for us to, to, to modify our debt service expenditure as a way of reducing our budget as well. But here's the problem with that. There's always some complication. The debt service expenditure is a significant part of the tax cap. is a significant part of the tax cap calculation. So the less debt service we have, the less exemption there is in a tax cap calculation. Subsequently, our tax cap is reduced as a result of having less debt. So that's always a problem we face as a school district because we try to be very conscientious about not carrying excess debt. But offset of that is your tax cap calculation is lower. And so, so while it creates an opportunity to reduce the budget, the implication or the impact on the tax side is somewhat offset because of the reduced tax cap calculation. So, so, so it gives us a benefit, but it's not a one-to-one benefit. However, it's still a plus potential for us. The fourth how, if you will, that we're looking to address is looking at contributions to reserves. Each year, we are very strategic about what reserves do we make contributions to. Two reserves that we'll be recommending to the board that we maintain our contributions to are the TRS Reserve, the Teacher Retirement System Reserve and the ERS Reserve, the Employee Retirement System Reserves. The reason why is because we know that both of those pension systems have a tremendous reliance on the, the value of the market, the stock market. So if New York, the market, the global market is now seeing a significant downturn a year from now in 21, 22 budget cycle, there's a tremendous likelihood that those rates will increase significantly. So by making the contribution to the reserves today, we avoid a situation that in 21, 22, or even 22, 23, the years 22, 23, that we are forced to make cuts to programs simply because of significant increases or potential increases in pension costs. So again, going back to that future present perspective, I have to live in 21, 22, 22, 23 and say, what does it look like right now? What do we like about it? What do we not like about it? And what can we do about it right now in 2020? And this is one of those perfect examples of again, trying to ensure that we're making decisions now that avoid significant impacts. And again, having the situation where we're saying we're cutting programs for students because of increased pension costs, that's a lag from the market. So in other words, what happens with the marketplace in 2021, the impact is literally a year later or in some cases, two years later in a row. So this is one of those that we will be certainly making a recommendation to the board to continue their contribution at year end to those two reserves. Because in fact, right now in the planning of the 2021 budget, if we didn't have those reserves, we would be seeing over a million five, 1.5 million dollars plus costs increase because of those pension costs. However, those costs are mitigated by having the reserves. So that's a good example of why you need a reserve or need to, to establish and maintain certain reserve capacity for particularly moments like these when an unseen crisis hit and you can maintain status quo for the most part. So with that being said, here's the wild card in the whole equation. And we'll drive our prioritization of the various options that we're looking at that we'll hope to present to the board in detail. Um, probably the end of April, beginning of May. The wild card is the severity of state aid reduction. So the state budget had many, many things in it and the devil is always in the detail, which I'll go to, go through in one second. But a new component of the state budget is what they're calling a pandemic adjustment. That pandemic adjustment is offset by the first federal stimulus. And if you listen to the news today, there is talk right now of a second federal stimulus recognizing that the first federal stimulus was merely a drop in the bucket in terms of the fiscal impact that states are having and New York State in particular. For Shenandoah, our pandemic adjustment was $393,000. The federal cares restoration essentially offset that. And in fact, the federal legislation dictates that there's a matching sequence between the state and the federal funds. In other words, New York couldn't say, hey, let's use more of the federal funds and less of New York money. It's a balancing act between the two of them. However, and so when we saw the 393,000 dollars, we're kind of, okay, that's very manageable. Because the one thing about Shenandoah, and we'll show you in a second, is that we don't have in comparison to many school district, a significant, we still have a sizable um, um reliance on state aid, about 27% of our revenue comes from state aid and about 71% plus come from taxes and the balance is uh appropriate of other revenue sources. So however, this pandemic adjustment right now is more aspirational than assured. In other words, we are almost guaranteed that at some point we will see further reduction in our state aid. And the reason why that is so, and this may be hard to read the fine print. However, as I said, the devil is in the details. As a part of the adopted budget, the governor was authorized to have his budget director make periodic adjustments during what they're called four spe- specified measurement periods. And the first one is April 1 through April 30. In other words, the state will assess its financial capacity and based upon that assessment, will go back and make adjustments to school aid. Right now, the adjustments are supposed to be equitable across the board. In other words, trying to avoid a situation of Robin from Peter to pay Paul. However, we also know that the notion of treating everyone equally is the absolute opposite of equity. Because poorer school districts or school districts with less fiscal capacity are being harmed more significantly than school district with the capacity to generate taxes to offset. So there is some assumption that at some point, that notion of taking a equal approach to the offset may change. So what we'll be watching over the course of the next several weeks here is to see what's the impact in that first measurement period and the April 1 to April 30 measurement period. And also we'll be watching to see what's the final verdict in terms of when board, when school board elections and budget votes will take place or can take place. That date will then dictate when we propose a budget to the board. Clearly, we'll be having conversation between that point. But right now, we are assuming that it will probably be maybe the May 5th, I think it's the May 5th or 12th board meeting and or possible, possibly the May 19th meeting, which was ironically the previously scheduled vote for the budget public referendum, we may have to use that meeting as a board meeting to potentially adopt a budget. But again, that date will be finalized once we get the final word in terms of what, what's the date that school districts will be able to vote on budgets. But a key part of this is this uncertainty that makes it so difficult for us to try to figure out what offsets of revenues or loss of revenues that we're really trying to contend with. Right now, and I'm going to go to this slide, give you some, some clarity on this piece of it. A major part of the adopted state budget was the reduction in foundation aid. This first column shows our foundation aid from our current year, the 2019, 2020 budget, which I'm going to refer to for this conversation as the prior year and refer to the proposed budget as the budget. So this, right now, our foundation aid from the state is 28.3 million dollars. If you recall, when the governor first came out with his executive budget proposal, he lumped all these aid categories into one number, which was tremendously problematic for us because without being able to unpack to see what these things were, we were truly unable to see how much foundation aid was being proposed. The adopted state budget eliminated the merging of all these categories into one. And so if you look into the third column now, you see now those are broken apart, textbook aid, software aid, hardware aid, library aid, we're not able to see those BOSI's aid. We're not able to see those because these are all expenditure driven aid, transportation aid. In other words, what we expend in 1920 will get reimbursed on in 2021. The state budget as adopted allowed for the continuation of the formula to fund these expenditure driven aid, which was a major, major win for school districts. The big contingency for us um is the foundation aid. However, I want to highlight this 4.8 million dollars in building aid. The initial state runs after the state budget was adopted actually had that number at, I think it was 3.6 million dollars. However, we know that based upon actual expenditures, the reimbursement will be 4.8. So that's why this is highlighted because it's being reconciled to actual um versus what was in initial state aid runs. And that's not an unusual thing for the state to use certain numbers to, to calculate prospective aid. And then we quote unquote true up those numbers after the year is finished to make sure that these expenditure driven aid categories are reimbursed accurately. However, if you look at the foundation aid line, you see it's relatively flat. We see a slight adjustment in the foundation aid. So the big thing for us is because quite frankly with you, we didn't expect to see a large amount of foundation aid even in our initial budget calculations. Consequently, going to a flat foundation aid is consistent with some of the assumptions that we made from the beginning of our budget process. And so, so to us right now, if everything were to stop at this moment, we would be in a fairly decent place. But just to give you some, some comparison, this is what the governor's initial executive budget looked like. This is what the approved state budget looked like with all those things broken out. So for us, the net difference is about 383, 383,000 dollar loss or reduction in overall state aid. That's not the same thing as a pandemic. Remember, the pandemic amount is offset by the federal amount. This is a true reduction in overall state aid between what the governor proposed and what the current state aid proposal has in it now from the approved budget. So right now, the loss that we're looking to contend with is about 383,000. However, because of those measurement periods that I shared before, this could potentially grow. And we'll find out in short order how fast this will grow. In other words, the loss could become larger as we move through the, the, the next several weeks and months. So at this point, let me stop and see if there are questions that you may have as a board. And I will try to go back to the respective slides to address your questions.
So any, any questions for board members at this point?
Yes, I do. Um, so ju- just sticking with the last slide that we were on and just so I understand it. So when looking at the state runs, there's a new ruling that or what we've expended will be reimbursed in the, 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 in next year at those higher amounts. And that was the question I sent you earlier. That's, that's what I'm trying to get clarification on.
Yes. So right now, and, and I, and I have to qualify that right now as we sit here, the state budget that was approved in April authorize the use of the existing formula of formulas to pay for expenditure driven aids. And so building aid, transportation aid, excess cost aid, all these aids that you see here are all expenditure driven aids and they're based upon what we spend. And that's the reason why, again, using building aid, for example, we know exactly how much building, how much, how much debt we'll pay out this year and how much we should be getting back in building aid. And so that's why this number was true up. So, so barring a complete change, which will require legislative action since the board was approved, since the budget was approved by the state, barring additional legislative actions, we expect that these reimbursement of expenditure driven aid should be what you see here on the sheet.
Okay, I also had a question about the BOSI's piece. Um, because originally we had something on, is, is this because of remote learning, the reason why it dropped significantly? Or we're just not using those programs to that extent this year?
Not necessarily. When you look at BOSI's aid from 1920, we were what, 1.9 million dollars? And we're looking to see BOSI's reimbursement about 2.2 million dollars. So we're actually a pretty flat line with our BOSI's expenditures from year to year.
Um, I was looking at another number and now I don't have it at the tip of my fingers, but thank you.
So we're talking about, remember, we're talking about reimbursement, not actually expenditures. So to clarify that, we get on average about 60 cents back for every dollar, that's probably like 66 cents back for every reimbursable expenditures from BOSI's. Not all BOSI's expenditures are reimbursable, but a large majority of them are. So you might be seeing a BOSI's expenditure budget. So if you do the math and you see a BOSI expenditure budget of about 3 million dollars and do the math, three sixes, 18, so it's about 60 cents to them. So that's probably why you see the difference between expenditures and reimbursement. It's not a dollar to dollar reimbursement. It's about things like 62 or 64 cents, actually.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, I had a question or a comment actually. It was kind of gratifying to see that our reserves for ERS and TRS were going to achieve exactly what they were intended to achieve when we fought so hard for the legislation that created that reserve in the first place. It wasn't an easy battle to win, but a little foresight was really beneficial to us. I did have a question. Uh, when we're talking about using a reserve uh in the capital expenditure area uh to pay towards our debt service rather than our current income, that has absolutely no diff- uh bearing on the actual uh amount of debt and therefore it will not in the future adversely affect our ability to you know, continue to borrow and keep the tax rate, uh, the tax charge uh related to capital expenditures flat?
That's, that's correct, Gary. One thing, so you know, it's, it's an interesting thing with debt service. Prior to the tax cap legislation, as a school district, we benefited tremendously. When I said benefited, our, our bond ratings were, were our credit rating, using that for example, your credit score. Our credit score as a school district, as you recall, seven years ago, Mrs. Wetmore um presented that we have, I think it's almost the highest possible bond rating that school districts can have. And that's as a result of how we have managed particularly debt over the years and how we have managed the overall budget over the years. Um, however, the tax cap made debt service an exemption as a way to reduce your overall tax cap. The issue then we have is because we're so efficient, we are penalized to some degree in the task cap calculation. However, with that being said, we'll take that penalty because the benefit of having a high bond rating because the benefit of having a high bond rating is the fact that we can go out and borrow money for capital projects at very, for layman's term, very low interest rates and subsequently very minimal impact on taxpayers. And that's the reason why, over the years, we've been able to bring on a variety of capital projects with little or no impact on the tax rate in our budget bottom line. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. There was one other item, and I, I included this in an email to you today, and I'm just not sure about the reliability of the information in the first place. But without really creating more confusion, there was, there was a, a a statement made that our current aid from, from the governor was dependent on, was, was a reflection of the deficit, the $10 billion loss as opposed to 15. But there was also a statement made by one author that the $10 billion is basically, that the aid that they're using so that they don't have to inflict the full loss of $10 billion on, on us in the form of lower aid was dependent on aid coming in from the federal government to, to that extent. And we were talking earlier about the aspirational nature of the pandemic assessment, because while it's provided, it just isn't in our hands, so it's aspirational at this point. But when we're talking about that $10 billion, the author was contending that that $10 billion is a real illusion at this point in time, that the legislation that would pay it, coming from the federal government, doesn't even exist at this point. That in fact, it was based on the next go-round when they might dispense another trillion dollars or so much, or thereabouts. I, I was hoping that perhaps you, you could do a little digging and find out what's credible and what's just a, a wild accusation on the part of an author.
So, so I, I'm going to opine, but with probably a bit more substance than I think than a lot of people who are right now making what I call bold speculative statements about what's real. And, and that's the exact reason why, when the budget was adopted by the state, they stipulated the governor having this authorization to look at actual state revenues. Because it's an interesting process that takes place with the state budget. You know, from the three men, or actually two men and a woman now in the room, to the man who's often left out, and that's the state comptroller, who often comes out and make pronouncement about what his assessment of the state revenue picture will be. And that assessment then is taken into consideration by the both houses of the legislature, as well as the governor, as a part of their deliberations. And, and many cases, I think that, you know, people probably like us, when we do budget, we kind of take a more conservative approach. I wouldn't necessarily say the worst, worst-case approach, but certainly a, a conservative or more moderated approach. And I think this budget for the state was based upon that more moderated approach with this contingency that the governor could continue to monitor it to see where actual revenues are. And so while, while that provided a safety net, if you will, for the state, it creates an absolute nightmare for school districts. Because when you think about, okay, April 1st to April 30th, and say we adopt a budget based upon whatever the state aid picture might be at that point, and if in the May, June, May 1 to June 30th, there is a further economic downturn and we see some reduction in state aid, at least we still, at this point, can make some modification to the next year's budget because at that point, we wouldn't have made any expenditures from that budget. Simply would have been a paper process. And, and hopefully, if, if there are significant downturns from the state, the state would also, hopefully, through executive order, allow school districts to make modifications to budgets that were hinged upon a particular state aid number at some point. But again, this is all speculative. The bigger issue I have and concern I have is what happens after the next school year start, July 1, and we get into these two other measurement periods, and we start to see reductions in state revenue? And that's where we have been spending a lot of time, myself and Mrs. Chase, particularly, and even today with Mrs. Bush and Mrs. and Dr. Wood, to try to figure out then, if we find ourselves into the school year and we see reductions in state aid. The question is, if it's not, it's not about, is it a reduction? It's the magnitude of the reduction. And consequently, it comes back to this, these first two house, if you will, that are offered to the board for consideration. It comes back to our fund balance capacity. Because the one thing that the Board of Education has is the authority to reappropriate fund balance at any given time to offset loss in revenue. The board isn't increasing the budget, the expenditure budget. The board is reappropriating fund balance to offset any revenue, so both sides of the equation equals out. So if we happen to see a reduction in state aid after July 1, once we're into the school year, it's only one of two things that districts can do. One, cut programs to balance with a lower revenue stream, and/or if you have any capacity, infuse some additional revenue to offset whatever that reduction is. And so, so that's the reason why we're very careful, even from the first phase of this strategic piece, to not use a large amount of appropriate fund balance because the more we use in the beginning to balance the revenue equation, the less capacity we have to contend with any future reductions that may come about as a result of these measurement periods. Does that make some sense from a logical sequence?
Absolutely.
Could I ask a question about the fund balance? So you have here, let me just ask this question first. The enhanced fund balance, is that currently at 3 million?
I don't have that number right now. Actually, our fund balance is higher than that. We're looking to, right now, we're saying, right now, we, we reappropriate 1.5 out of our fund balance. And if we double that, the reappropriation will go to 3 million, that's what that is.
Okay.
That, so our fund balance right now, between our fund balance is roughly about 5.6 million.
Oh, okay, got it. So the unappropriated fund balance, so you say here that the 2%, the state doesn't, that we have a 4%. What I'm curious, and I, and I, if you could just please explain this for me. The, so what, so what, the plan is to look at where we're coming in at for 2019-2020? And with, and to determine how much we could put into this enhanced fund balance of the unappropriated, this unappropriated money, correct?
Yes, okay, keep going.
Okay, so it's, so 2%. But you also mentioned measures being taken now, such as a necessity, a message out to staff saying, only purchase what is necessary, looking at unexpendant allocations. What will they do? Have you looked at, will this put us over the 4%? It's just trying to gauge where are we at with these measures?
So, so that's the reason why. So, so let me kind of put it in this kind of simple terms then, probably easier to understand. So, so say, right now, the state allows school districts a 4% fund balance capacity. They, and that, that, that 4% translate to $5 million, just for conversation purposes. And say if we don't do anything this year, currently in 2019-20, and next year, for next year's budget, the 2021 budget, we decide of that 5 million, we're going to take away 1.5 million of that to add back into additional funds. So now, instead of only 1.5 million, we're going to add 3 million of it. So of their fund balance, their $5 million fund balance, we're actually saying, instead of traditionally, we'll take away 1.5, but now we're going to take away 3. So now that would essentially leave us with a fund balance capacity of $2 million. Remember, we are reappropriating 3 million in any given year, and all we have is 2. So fast forward in 2122, we will not be able to reappropriate $3 million because all we would have is a fund balance of $2 million coming off a very tightly designed budget. So that's the structured deficit that we would create for ourselves. Consequently, to avoid that structured deficit for the future year, the structured deficit isn't necessarily in 2021. The structured deficit will hit us in 2122. So, so to avoid that, what we're saying now, again, if our fund balance is at 5 in our current year, if we could maximize savings and roll over, say, for conversation purposes, $2 million more into our fund balance. So now, fund balance at year-end is 7, okay? We know that the, the state allowance of 4% is the 5, so we add the 2. Yes, at that minute, we're over the 4% allowance. But the reality of it is, the 2 that we brought in, we're going to take away 1. So now we're down to 4 because now we're reappropriating 3 into the revenue stream. So now we're down to 4. So essentially, we'll be able to reappropriate $3 million and still have the potential fund balance capacity to go into 2122 of about $4 million. So that if we had to be compelled, again, to contribute $3 million, we know at least, again, we have another year to potentially do it. And hopefully, things would have changed significantly over the next 18 to 24 months. So neither scenarios are great, but the difference between starting at 5, reappropriating 3, and ending with 2, knowing that your commitment is 3 in any given year, that's a problem. Versus if we're able to generate 2 more million and start at 7, reappropriate 3 and end the year in 4, at least we have some degree of comfort that if we had to contend with this for another year, we are able to do so. Does that make some sense?
It does, but it's still specific to the 2% that's unappropriated.
No, 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 the 2%, the 2%, the 2% has nothing to do with anything. The 2% is only mentioned, back to the reality, only, the only percent that matters is the 4% allowance. The 2%, where we were basically saying at some point, prior to the state moving from 2% to 4%. So if this $4 million that we have left over, my gauge is kind of driving your car. If I have 100 miles to go and I'm on a quarter tank, I need to know that I need to get some gas in at the next gas station because I'm going to run out of gas before I get to my destination. So consequently, we're looking at this $4 million, this hypothetical equation, and saying, when do we start getting close to this, our fund balance being around 2%? Because that's becoming a very, very tight point for us to say, can we sustain this moving forward? So that 2% is simply an artificial marker based upon the past allocations. Does that make some sense?
It, it does. I, I was wondering why 2% because of the 4%? Why?
Because 2% used to be at once upon a time was the allowance the state allowed. But the state changed that because they realized that too many school districts were functioning too tight to the margin. And so give you an example. If, if we, if we were back to a 2% state law or revenue, um, fund balance allocation, we would be absolutely up the creek right now. Because the margins will be too tight for us to do any of these things. The only option we would be talking about in this conversation is to cut budget, cut programs. So that allocation of 4% allowance gives us ability to maneuver some things to, again, do the three, the things that we said before, have minimal impact, and I want to emphasize this point, minimal impact on taxes, having a flat budget coming in, preserving the quality programs, and avoiding a structured deficit. We can't make decisions today that will haunt us for the next several years because at that point, we have made those decisions locally, not the state. And so therefore, there's no one coming to the rescue two years down the road because of decisions that we make today.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Any other question, Mr. Presley?
No, I'm, I'll turn it to the board. Any other questions from board members?
No, I think Dr. Robinson was very clear.
Yeah. I, I've, I've taken a look at this. One of the things I see is that what we typically do in our budget is we have the ability to, to master what I call the shock absorbers. The reserve fund is a classic shock absorber, and Dr. Robinson explained it is that, you know, six months into a school year, you may not have enough money coming in, and you can turn to that shock absorber to absorb some of that or to bring additional funds in without harming programs. So there's various shock absorbers in this budget that within this presentation. One is the year-to-year, looking at costs from, that are less, in this school year, we could probably bring forward into next school year. Another is the reserves, uh, looking probably more at debt than ERS and TRS for, for the obvious reasons. And another thing we have as a shock absorber is, when we look at the potential loss of revenue from local taxes, we're looking at probably a lot of that would be impacted 12 to 18 months later through the tax recentry process. So there's, there's various things going on that allow the money, or allow us to sort of absorb an immediate loss without cutting into programs. And that's really what we want to focus our time on before we do anything else because there's still a bunch of unknowns, particularly national government, state government, and where that's going to go. But the more I see in the news, more, there's potentially more stimulus coming. At least there's a plan from the state that said there's, there's four time periods that it's going to be looked at for making adjustments. So at least there's, there's sort of a plan forming to, to help us work us through the unknowns. And then there are a lot of other things that I, I really don't feel comfortable even bringing to the conversation right now because those are things that don't have to be brought in. Not yet, but I think you made a very good point, Dr. Robinson. It's not going after programs. It's going after everything else we can do to better manage our shock absorption of, of funds. Any comments?
No, thank you. I think that's a great summary of it, Mr. Presley, thank you.
All right, no further comments. Let's go to consent items and on to the treasurer's report. Can I get a motion for the treasurer's report?
I got it.
First one, Mr. Gilbert, second from?
Christina.
Mrs. Rajat, thank you very much. Any comments or questions on the treasurer's report? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have any nays? Passes unanimously, let's go into minutes, March 10th. Can I have a motion on the minutes for March 10th?
Deanna's first.
Gusta's second.
Of course, second, Mrs. Rajat. Any comments, questions on the March 10th minutes? If not, all in favor?
I knew you weren't there.
You weren't there, Todd, so we have one abstain from Mr. Gilbert and six yea, ayes. Let's go to minutes from March 17th. Motion on this one?
No motion, Naomi.
Hoffman's second, Mr. Gilbert, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to March 24th minutes. Any, can I get a motion on this one?
So move.
Gusta.
Mrs. Miller, second, Mrs. Stevenson, any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to business items. We can combine these two contracts. So can I get a motion on the first and second items?
Deanna.
First, Mrs. Stevenson, any second?
Naomi.
Mrs. Hoffman, if not, okay. Any comments, questions on the two contracts? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so any nays? Nope. And then action item three, scholarship and local grant donations. Can I get a motion on this one?
Christine, a motion with gratitude.
Mrs. Rajat, with gratitude, second.
Naomi.
Mrs. Hoffman, second, any comments, questions? If not?
I just had one question. Is the, the very generous donation from Mohawk Honda, is it earmarked for something that's very large?
So Mohawk, Mohawk Honda, for the last several years, have provided this donation that has been used to offset a wide variety of things related to athletic departments. Things such as when we have state championship teams, when, when teams win state Things such as when we have state championship teams win, when teams win state championships, some of the, the things that kids receive. So this is largely offset on a wide variety of things in athletics.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes, any nays? If not, motion carries unanimously. Let's go to Mrs. Myla and students' acceptance of special education placements. Can I get a motion on this one?
Christina.
First, Mrs. Rajat. Second, Mr. Gilbert. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes unanimously. Let's go to approval of staffing recommendations. Back to Mrs. Bush.
Naomi.
Any comments, questions on this one? Can I, can I get a motion on it? Excuse me.
Naomi.
Staffing recommendations.
Todd.
Mr. Delalov has a motion. Can I get a second?
Naomi, sorry, second.
Hoffman, second. Any comments, questions on staffing? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. Motion carries. And let's go to, back to Mrs. Carmen with policies and regulations for second reading.
Motion.
Can we get a motion on that? Mr. Gilbert, can I get a second?
Naomi.
Mrs. Hoffman, second. Mrs. Carmen, do you have any questions for her? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll hear a bunch of ayes. Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so now let's go back to public comments, and thank you to Mrs. Defisiani for taking care of the comments coming in. And we have no questions from the public at this point. I would like to turn it back to Dr. Robinson. Any other comments you would like to present just in the, on the district in, in general?
No, other than stay tuned. We anticipate another communication going out to parents, teachers, staff, probably Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, to clarify a lot of questions related to the cancellation of Regents exams, as well as Dr. Wood and Mrs. Defisiani, they're working on a survey that, we're just trying to get some sense of, of how parents are, how the experience of online e-learning is taking place, the time allocations and things of that nature. So again, it's a part of our continuous improvement efforts. So a brief survey will be going out, I think maybe again, Thursday afternoon, Friday morning. Not a very long one. We're just trying to get some sense of, of how the plans are unfolding in various households. It's not a popularity vote. It's not like if we get more people say we like this, like that, we're making the changes. It's more so for us to truly try to get a gauge of, of how things are playing out, recognizing that they probably are playing out very differently from household to household.
Very much. Go ahead, Mr. Delalov.
Yes. There was a communications about graduation requirements. Will there be anything going out clarifying what the Regents have done relative to graduation requirements? I'm sure a lot of senior and senior parents are, are very interested in that.
Very much so. We have a meeting scheduled. We, myself, Dr. Wood, and high school administration, academic administrators, for about an hour, hour and a half tomorrow, to walk through exactly what does it mean for Shen as a system, but more importantly, what does it mean for our students and the students in various circumstances and situation. Clearly, our objective is to avoid situations where kids are unduly or unfairly penalized as a result of the change, and try to maximize the flexibility that the state was so gracious to provide in the, in the guidance document, to again, give our students the best opportunity to complete high school, because we know that's a significant milestone for our young people. So, so we'll be going through that tomorrow pretty extensively, and again, hopefully by Thursday afternoon, possibly Friday morning, communication will be going out regarding that.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from board members?
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, Deanna.
Okay, you know, I, I know this is so fluid, but I have to put it out there just because we, we hear this from the community. And as much as we don't know when we will be going back, that's totally understood. It's a, as days go on, everything changes. But just want to put it out there, I'm sure that we will begin discussions. Dr. Robinson, if you just want to comment maybe on some of the activities that would have been, or could have been, and can be maybe, experienced by our students, i.e. proms, i.e. graduation, i.e. everything else that may happen, April, as, you know, you would normally go down that slide all the way till June. So I don't know if you just want to maybe comment on that at this point?
Great comment, Mrs. Stevenson. I think you may have peeked at my calendar, because a part of that meeting tomorrow with the high school administration, Mr. Augustin only wanted to talk about what we call a large group events, proms, graduation, and tried to discuss some contingencies around those things, recognizing that unfortunately, some of those events are, quite frankly with you, a lot of those events are contingent upon the next executive order, so to speak. However, with that being said, I, I think everyone is in agreement that, you know, I can't necessarily speak to prom, but certainly things like graduation, where you've had colleges have canceled graduation for kids, that's not, quite frankly with you, I always say, maybe I'm selfish as so, because I have a senior at home, that that's such a significant event for our young people, that even if we have to do something in August, we will, because I think that's such a wonderful recognition for our, our students. And so, so again, I'm not suggesting August, I think August is just an outlier date. Hopefully, things will, will, will reconcile from a public health perspective, and I think that's the most important piece of it. We have to watch the public health piece of it, making sure that whatever we do, we're not doing it just because of protocol, we're doing it because it's truly taken in mind, the health and safety, while the significance of the reg, of the recognitions as well. So, so we're having those conversations tomorrow as a part of this, just to try to ask some contingencies in place to do, to deal with some of those larger group events.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All good stuff? Anything else? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Naomi, first motion?
Mrs. Hoffman first, Mr. Gilbert second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any nays? No. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Be well, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.